out of hand technically. Going forward, it's going to be incorporated into this rate structure. So it it's going to, I mean, so that's what's that's what's driving those numbers. You have capital besides this.
Yeah, in in twenty six, Mike, you know, we've got two hundred seventy eight thousand dollars of capital improvements, pay go capital improvements scheduled.
Yes.
In order to smooth things out, we've got to use two hundred fourteen thousand of funds on hand. So you can see where that all of the thing to be equal takes that running cash down into a negative position. But then, you know, with the nine point six six percent rate increases annually, you can see we're building cash up again to address the capital expenditures in twenty seven, twenty nine, and thirty. And we still have, you know, coverage in excess of one point oh five times.
I I hope you can hear me. I have a question. These these numbers are based on ready to serve charges and consumption. Let's say consumption does not meet the criteria that you guys have towards this formula. Let's say everybody gets smart because we're tired of the high rates and we drop consumption by twenty five percent. How does that affect this this program that you guys created if we don't have the consumptions that you guys got this based on?
Warren, did you hear that question?
You know, I want to apologize. Um, I I I heard part of it. This assumes that city charges and service and what I did here is I simply isolated commodity and ready to serve charges, then we have township charges, and then we have other miscellaneous revenues, um, you know, in in in, uh, the budget. So the only thing that we're talking about increasing, you know, we're not talking about increasing connection charges, more penalties, or anything like that, because that's kind of arbitrary. You know, there's not a, there's not a, um, uh, you know, no was change from year to year, you know, consumption, you know, i- i- is relatively, um, you know, anticipated. So again, we only increase ready to serve charge, commodity charges, uh, for the for the purpose of this analysis.
Yeah, my question, Mike, was let's this is based on ready to serve charges and commodity charges, a potential increase of that. What if we don't hit the the commodity charges and we're twenty five percent less? What does this do to your numbers overall? That's that's a pretty big drop.
Well, it's something you're going to always have to evaluate. But, and you know, it it is, I mean, there's a lot of things that could happen, but, um, it's something you got to look at annually. And if we have to in some situations, you know, you do have a relatively healthy cash on hand, so if you need to.
Well, and and again, like, I don't know, you sent me an email earlier today, uh, there were some questions and just if you're rating an operational standpoint, you know, a system of your size ideally wants to have a minimum of six months on cash on hand.
Right. Right now, you're 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 over a year. You're you're like a year and three months.
And, you know, again, that's why you have the ability to smooth out rates because you can afford to use under A J and like for fiscal year end twenty six. The beauty is that you have the cash on hand, smooth out rates, and use two hundred fourteen thousand of funds on hand to make things balance, and you're still well over that six month target.
And that rate increase for the ready to serve, that's a monthly fee, correct?
Yeah, monthly serve, well, they're both monthly.
Months is right, exactly right.
But yeah, you're ready to serve as fixed costs.
Because you, because when you say that, you sound like you're handling it one time.
Ratings in the perfect world would love to have the ready to serve match your fixed cost, which would include fixed operating cost. Not all your operating costs are variable, but, you know, from a credit standpoint, you know, because of that consumption variable on commodity, they'd love to have all of your fixed, you know, uh, capital and fixed debt service charges covered by, you know, ready to serve. And and what that does is that mitigates the consumption variable, uh, which essentially the commodity charge is based on, because from year to year, you don't know what your actual consumption is going to be. But I mean, I'm getting into the weeds here and for that, I apologize.
That's right.
But right now, just for simply, you know, simply, you already keep it as simple as possible, we've just assumed we increase both at the same rate.
Any more questions on the water end? All right, why don't we briefly get into the wastewater end?
Okay, wastewater won't take us long because we did the exact same thing. When we looked at wastewater, um, you know, we looked at the current budget and we realized that, you know, there would be a budgeting of funds, you know, to meet O M and R and all of the funding requirements. Uh, so we're assuming, you know, based on activity to date, we'd be, you know, using about a hundred and twenty nine thousand dollars of of funds on hand. Now, in twenty five, assuming that Mike said, hey, for this purpose, let's build in our capital and let's start at six percent. Let's see what six percent goes for us. So if you go back, you know, now, if you assume commodity and ready to serve charges increase by, you know, uh, six percent, you have to remember, there is an increase up there because budgeted twenty four did not break apart township charges for service and city charges for service. I did that for projected budgeted twenty five. And keeping the township constant at the eighty seven, seven fifty, we assumed that, you know, city charges for service went up six percent. In order to meet all of the funding O M and R and funding requirements, we still had to use a hundred and fifty one thousand dollars of funds on hand. Thereafter, we would need two, thirty two, thirty nine, not over, if we included twenty five, or six percent twenty five, plus the subsequent year rate increases to be one oh five coverage, we'd be looking at thirty nine, one three five percent over that, you know, uh, six year period. So what we did again, going to, again, to remember, we held the township constant, we continued to raise operating expenditures at three percent a year, which is a, you know, certainly reasonable and maybe not enough given the last. Uh, but if you look at the funding requirements and the new debt service relating to, you know, the twenty three bonds proposed, twenty four bonds, we would need a twenty two percent rate increase for fiscal year end twenty six. Again, Mike's goal was to let's smooth out these rate increases, let's avoid the double digit impact, you know, of the, you know, budgeted funding requirements. So moving on to the last half, this was arbitrary, you know, forgive me, but it was easy just to start there, so we were consistent from year to year. We started to raise rates beginning with the fiscal year end twenty five at nine point six six percent. And we raised it in twenty five through twenty seven. But through twenty seven, we finally get back above water. And again, this is all impacted by the amount of the scheduled capital improvements and the new debt service. So by the time we hit twenty seven, we start to get into that positive coverage. In fact, we have one point one five times coverage. But you'll notice in twenty seven and twenty eight, we don't have any pay go capital. And you have to remember that the pay go capital in in the sewer side significantly less than the water demands. So we don't have to raise rates to meet one oh five coverage in twenty seven, twenty eight, twenty nine. Oh, I'm sorry, my apologies. We're raising it nine point six six percent for fiscal year end twenty five, twenty six, and twenty seven. And then because we have, you know, enough compounding effect, we can lower the subsequent rate increases, you know, to four percent. And again, you have to remember, all this is going to change, uh, you know, with, you know, the negotiation with township, you know, and and the impact that they're going to have on future capital improvements in the system. Uh, Mike and I do not know what those costs are currently going to be. We don't know how the negotiations are going to pan out, uh, you know, between, you know, the city, you know, and township. You know, we've had discussions, what's to, what's a fair and appropriate way, you know, to allocate these costs, not just immediate capital cost, but going forward. And, you know, I think there's a real good opportunity, you know, to clean up existing agreements, which clearly need work. Uh, and, uh, but, uh, again, wastewater is is simply in a better operating, you know, condition and doesn't have the same capital improvements, you know, that are currently necessary for water. But again, you know, I I I caution you that all of this will change because when we bring the township on board, you know, to, um, serve the development, uh, on ninety six, uh, you know, it changes the demand on both green and plants, and and that's a cost, you know, uh, you know, that's going to be addressed, you know, by the township, park rates, um, and, uh, the grand dollars that have been allocated, uh, to the project.
So real quick, um, if you went with the sporadic rate increases on the sewer end, you're seeing, uh, for twenty four, twenty five, this with with the six percent increase, you're seeing a dollar seventy five increase on the ready to serve on the sewer end, twenty nine cents on the consumption. In twenty five, twenty six, six dollars sixty three cent increase on the ready to serve, dollar nine on the consumption. Twenty six, twenty seven, no rate increase. Twenty seven, twenty eight, twenty two cents on the ready to serve, four cents on the consumption. Twenty eight, twenty nine, dollar forty on the ready to serve, twenty twenty three cents on the on the consumption. And twenty nine, thirty, two dollars and ninety six cents on the ready to serve, forty nine cents on the consumption. Six year average is two dollars and sixteen cents on the ready to serve, thirty six cents on the consumption. If you if you smooth the rates, nine point six six for the for twenty fiscal year twenty four, twenty five, twenty five, twenty six, twenty six, twenty seven, and then the four percent in twenty eight, twenty nine fiscal years, you're looking at two eighty one on the ready to serve for, um, this upcoming year, forty six cents on the consumption, three dollars and eight cents in twenty five, twenty six, fifty one cents on the consumption. Twenty six, twenty seven, three dollars thirty eight cents, fifty six cents on the consumption. Twenty seven, twenty eight, dollar fifty four on the ready to serve, twenty five cents on the consumption. Twenty eight, twenty nine, dollar sixty on the ready to serve, twenty six cents on the consumption. Twenty nine, thirty, dollar sixty six on the ready to serve, twenty seven cents on the consumption. Six year average is two dollars and thirty five cents on the ready to serve, thirty nine cents on the consumption. Any questions on the sewer?
The number that sticks out for me is the fifty eight percent on the water and thirty nine percent, that is up ninety seven percent over the next six years of increase. If you're paying a hundred bucks now, you'll be paying quite a bit more. I'm glad that we're doing a lot of improvements, there's a need, but.
Yeah, I recognize the costs, but the system is severely depreciated. It's got to be fixed. I mean, otherwise, we could, you know, let the sewer system deteriorate, and we have all our issues.
Perry Beach, I reside in City Hall. The one que- question I have, um, for the council is to, um, have an idea of why we're in the position that we're in, that we need to have these types of raises. I'm not saying that they're not warranted or anything. But I, when it comes to sewer, um, and if we don't know, we're bound to repeat ourselves. When the auditor, when the auditor had the audit, um, and it was someplace between seven hundred and eight hundred thousand dollars that the sewer, um, lost, and again, it was explained that it was O P E F, um, retirement and depreciation. Looking at this, um, in twenty twenty three, twenty twenty two to twenty twenty three, this represents cash on hand and doesn't account for depreciation or or any pension O P E F loss. We were operating, our sewer was operating at a hundred and ninety eight thousand, seven hundred and seventy seven dollars and twenty four cents in the red. That's a substantial amount. I guess I I just, I would like to know.
Oh, yeah, those are, that's a cor- I know what you're talking about. Those are corrected. Um, I didn't take out O P E F and depreciation on those, so we were actually in the positive. I do have an updated sheet on that. I did send the council to today.
Okay.
So we were, we never negative cash flow.
Any other question?
I'd like to just clarify regarding wastewater capital needs. Warren just mentioned that he didn't think there was much cap, as much capital needed than water, but we do need headworks fairly soon. As wastewater that you've estimated eight to nine million dollars is going to be needed, and it's not included in this at all.
We've done nothing with the, with, we've done nothing with the plant expansions in this yet, because one, we haven't figured out what it's going to be. We know, we have estimates, but percentage of what's how it's going to be paid for, we haven't, we haven't figured that out yet.
Even if I ninety six doesn't go through, is headworks still going to need to be replaced?
We have to, the, the, yeah, the headworks has to replace no matter what. It's old, it's going on forty years old, it has to be replaced, um, and it's going to be a significant cost. Now, it's going to be, you know, obviously, it it depends on what the township does. If the township stays with us, you know, they're going to be a part of that. If they, their their agreement expires in twenty seven. If we can't come to an agreement on this and they go on their own, well, now we have one other issue. But yeah, we're going to have to pay proportion of that, and so is township.
Those on flow.
Yeah, that's the, well, as of, if today, it's eighteen, today, they pay eighteen percent. I would like to see everything based on flow.
All right, so you want to do the funding model first and then the resolutions?
So, yeah, I I guess we, if you want to move forward, we, city, city administration sees no direction on which way you want to go with the rates, and then I think you can have, you know, take action if you if you so choose on the resolutions and and move forward.
And I I just want to point out that I didn't make any historical adjustments that Mike's talking about, uh, in what were the audited numbers. You know, it Mike pointed it out to me, you know, uh, that the change in pension liability really is a non cash expense. Uh, I I I know for various GAAP reasons, it's shown on the revenue expense statement, but it really is a balance sheet item and not, you know, a revenue expense item.
And we've already addressed, yeah, and we've structured our pension pre payment act to address these ebbs and flows. So it's, as far as I'm concerned, it's really not an issue. And you're, with depreciation, you've been making more investment than what the depreciating amount is every year, so you're you're making the investments that need to be made.
I know we're anxious to get Washington going, everyone is. Is there, is this decision needed to start work on Washington?
So when you go back in the capital, you know, uh, the non cash appreciation, uh, and, uh, the change in pension liability, uh, you know, the cash flow looks very, very different. Again, as I said, I didn't change any of it. I I think what I did was, um, was so you could see historically what happens to operating expenses. I mean, that's the lion's share of of your costs beyond funding requirements and, you know, to gage one year from the next. And I think it's important to look at, you know, historical operating expenses. So that was really the purpose, including the, including the prior years.
Yeah, we we need to know whether you're going to, if you want to do this in order for Washington, if if you don't take, if if council decides not to take action, we can't move forward in Washington.
The fund balances right now, we have that over four hundred days, six point two million dollars. Could Washington be paid for by that, taking it out of that six point two rainy day fund?
Six point two, you don't have that much. You have about one point.
Four hundred days of cash.
You have about one point five million in the water fund and about one point six million in the sewer fund.
Okay, I thought, I must have misunderstood.
No, if you if you take that, yeah.
You have point two in each.
Yeah, that's on, now, if you took that and your revenues, you know, your revenues this year, yeah, you probably would get six two, but, yeah, you only have, you couldn't, you can't take cash for the, for Washington. And if you, and if you did decide to pay your cash on hand, you're draining it significantly.
Just, just one of the options.
Yep, sure.
Uh, rural arcus, uh, I don't know where I live now. I live down there. Just a question, and some of this went right over my head. I know you guys know much more about it than I do. But what I find myself looking at these numbers and adding up all those numbers that Mike gave us, it does come down to the fact that my water sewer bill doubles by twenty twenty seven. As a business owner, that's a lot.
If you're looking at water, you're correct.
What I'm confused by is that this water bill thing is all being pushed by the fact that we're doing Washington Street. Are we doing too much too fast? Are we putting our city into, I mean, the citizens are not going to be happy when you tell them their water bill's going up. Just, just a question, and again, it's over my head, but that's what I see.
Mike, if I could.
Sure.
You know, I I have been doing this full finance work and I I I'm dating myself, but I started as an intern at First Mission Corporation in nineteen seventy nine. I started, uh, in nineteen eighty five full time when I graduated from Wade State. I was on the six year plan. But, uh, it is a maybe now, maybe later situation. None of this stuff is going to get cheaper. And it it's a unfortunate reality, and there's always the coulda, coulda, shouldas. And I have to tell you all, I I've heard this conversation repeated so hundreds of times, you know, over the years. And, you know, it is in fact, you know, um, and, you know, a burden, and it's a cost, but that cost is only going to go up, you know, and and at some point, you've got to fight, I mean, you know, bite the bullet and and move forward. Now, I recognize that that's a difficult decision, um, you know, but I just want to, you know, alert everybody to the fact that these costs never, ever go down.
Yeah, I mean, it's something to remember, I mean, this is an old system. And the other problem you have, you're a small system. When you're in a small system, those costs are, those costs are significantly spread. For example, if we were in the Grand Rapids or the Wyoming system, we wouldn't be burdened with all of this, because it's, you have hundreds of thousands of rape here. Same thing goes like in Detroit. We don't have that luxury. We have, I want to say probably twenty one hundred users in the city system and maybe another nine hundred in the township. That is a small amount of people, small amount of, amount of customers for, and unfortunately, years ago, when we built the plants, we built Cadillacs. So if, you know, if we went, Rockford, Cedar Springs, they have, they pay less, Portland, but they also have lesser systems than we do.
But we also built Cadillacs and then for thirty years forgot about them and then put money aside.
That's it.
Or maintain a more fixed sum. And when you're making up for thirty years of progress, it gets expensive, but.
This is another example of the old shit that this council has had to deal with because our predecessors didn't take the time to do certain things right and take take it. And so unfortunately, some of us are going to be the bear of bad news.
Yep.
I would rather do that and be able to explain why I'm doing it than to kick the can down the road to somebody else and then be a hypocrite.
Which is easy.
For complaining that they've kicked the can down to us.
Because that's what's happened up to this point, is that can's been kicked and kicked and kicked and kicked. Our system's going to fail, and then what?
Then you really, then.
Then we're all.
Yeah, then you got Flint.
So.
I I I need a little time to digest this, and and I know next Monday we have have a meeting, and I'd like to think about it before we can put it on the agenda, come back next Monday with, that's me personally, I'm always speaking for myself, and 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 come back and make that want to talk to a few constituents out there and see what their thoughts are on this, and so I can get a little bit of personal feedback and then come back. I I I know where I'm leaning, but I I need a little bit of time to think.
Same.
So next Monday, put that on the agenda.
I've got one last comment. I was curious what Alleghan and Ionia did for rates, so I just, I looked up, uh, they're not in Kent County, but, uh, our water consumption rate is two dollars and sixty two cents per thousand gallons. Alleghan is double that at five dollars and sixteen cents. Ionia is four dollars and ten cents, so their, uh, consumption rates are quite a bit higher. Now, where they make up for it is in the ready to serve, we're twenty six point, twenty six dollars, ninety cents, they're seventeen and fifteen dollars, so quite a bit less.
Something you have to remember with those two cities, one, you can never compare apples and, you're comparing apples and oranges with any system, one. Two, but you also have to remember in those cities, you have Perrigo, which is a large consumption entity, and in Ionia, you have the prisons. And, um, that significantly pays for a lot of their, their costs, their, so there's that.
Yep.
We don't have that. We have, King Milling is not a, I mean, they don't use a lot of water. Our biggest water consumer is Lighthouse. But that, it's the masses to the prisons and what Perrigo have, we just don't have that there.
Sure, and the prisons is fifteen percent of the water.
And it's a large institution where users, it's a double edged sword.
I'm just saying, I'm glad I'm not being.
Something that you can rely on, but if there's ever a departure, uh, one of the things rated agency looks at is concentration risk. And, uh, you know, while there is an upside, funding capital improvements with large institutional users, there's a huge downside, should that ever change. Should that ever change? We've seen that happen with prison closures, and, you know, and relocation of manufacturing facilities. I mean, and you saw what happened when the flow of Lighthouse was down for just three years. Well, I think just be grateful that they're still there.
I'd just like to finish. With sewer, we're commodity. We are at $4.80 per thousand. Ionia's close at $4.60. Alleghan is $7. So, their, their consumption charges, in some cases, are double. Where their ready-to-serve is quite a bit less. To me, that would help conservation, but maybe it's something to look at, raising the per gallon charge, reducing the ready-to-serve charge.
But if you do that, no matter how it works out, your, your, both percentages are going up equally.
You're also more dependent on his consumption.
Yeah, I would be very careful being so competitive consumption. Because you have fixed costs no matter what your consumption is.
I'm just passing this on for...
No, I don't.
Yeah, my thing is, if anybody wants to reach out to me, I live at 505 North Jefferson. My phone number is 616-260-3922. So I'd like to have some input, so I'm gonna put it out there.
Am I invited?
You are invited. You already got my word.
All right, so you don't want to do either one of the volumes without some direction on the rates?
I need a direction on the rates. We can't approve the volume notices without the rates.
Then we'll go back down Monday.
Yeah.
Okay.
So, if we're gonna do this on Monday, is there a possibility we can start earlier, because I see this going on.
Yeah, so we have a 6 o'clock, we have a 5:30 meeting already for the, for the master plan.
Right.
So, if you wanna get done at 5:30, if we get that done before 7, we can get rolling, if that's what you wanna do, but we have a meeting at 5:30.
Right.
All right. Any additional, no, council comments for anybody?
Perry Beecham, again. I just wanna thank you for putting it just one week, because I feel like this is not a regular council meeting. It was a special called meeting, and it just, it just feels like, as a paying water payer and everything, it just feels like, like you're trying to sneak it through or whatever. I know that's not the case. But again, having to delay it to a regular council meeting, I think, is a very good move on your part. And I, again, I, I think the results will be the same. It's something that we have to do. But I just think it's a wise decision. Thank you.
Any other council comments before we give it to the panel?
May I order to adjourn at 7:25?
So, support motion and a second to adjourn, all those who favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Or oppose.
Thanks, Mark.
Yep, thanks.